Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, November 19, 2015. Please rise as Matt Duvan, Associate Pastor of Emmanuel Baptist Church, leads us in the invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Sandra Escada, Director of Human Resources.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful and so in awe of how willingly you pour out your love and care and grace upon us. Well, we thank you for this town that you've given us, for the folks that live inside of it and then work to make it a better place. Lord, I pray that you would encourage all citizens to stand and do the right thing and to serve one another as we ultimately serve you. Lord, I pray for the meeting tonight as we speak and we discuss, Lord, may it be words of care and words of hope that we speak to one another, and Lord, may we lift one another up. But I pray that during this time and this season of thanksgiving, Lord, our hearts would be turned towards the knowledge of your grace and of your mercy and of your abundant love. And, Lord, as we think about how we can be thankful for all that you've given us, Lord, I pray that we would turn our hearts again to you and that we would serve you and you alone. It's in that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me as I say, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an opportunity for public comments, citizens who desire to address the council on any matter they sign up to do so prior to this meeting, public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please leave the comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken. And Mr. Glenn Colby, I know that you've signed up for the public appearances, and you're welcome to speak now as well if you wish.
A mistake on my part.
No, that's no problem. And Mr. Wes Teeters.
As I say, here's a camera question. I'm at 6 South Farm, Temple, Texas, 76501, and I'm proud of that symbol on the wall. First line on my agenda is the street cleaners this morning. I wanted to let you know they're actually taking a go to round downtown and cleaning around all the cars, all the -- there's not a lot of pride in that, and I'm going to thank them and make sure y'all know that they're doing a really good job of making sure we got that clean. There were many downtown over the downtown area. I think her name is Derby. I don't know if I'm correct, but I asked and I think I'm right. I know somebody wrote a really nice letter in the paper this weekend, owner, and said they'd be watching her. It's kind of a, you know, and I went down, I kind of took it personal. Anybody that's trying to help the downtown organization would need to support them. I haven't talked to them. I'm offering all my help that I can, and I thank y'all for bringing her in. Don't know a whole lot about her, but I'm just proud of somebody that's taking as much pride as I am in downtown. Next line, sidewalk clean today. Those sidewalks have not been cleaned as I've seen in the move ballroom in the past. We've been seeing them cleaning. They're actually taking power washers out there, cleaning sidewalks. You wouldn't believe the difference in the dirt. I mean, you can see if you walk in front of my place, the move ballroom, you can see the difference because there's no gum in front of my place. I would recommend for the city to get a heated one. It pulls up the gum, and there's a little random thing that you can actually push, and it will speed up the process. You'll save dollars. It's real easy. Anyway, I bought a couple of things, so I don't want to spend too much time. Anybody wants to know about that, hold on at me. I've got a lot of experience on that. I'm glad to be back and open, and would like to work with some people on ways we can make it easier for businesses to come into the downtown area, the temple area. There's a couple of places where we could do some work and do some good. Again, man, anything I can do to help, I'd be glad to. I'm thinking about having a meeting next week with all the downtown businesses. I'm going to give them letters and ask if they'd like to come. It's kind of a meet and greet for some of the people that don't know some of the folks. Some of the downtown businesses, let me say this again, meeting next week on downtown to get to know all the downtown businesses, and my downtown businesses think what should be done, what we can do to make downtown even better. It's just something I would really, again, I grew up on 807 North Main. I'm proud of Main Street, proud of Soho, I mean, proud of Marwood. Anyhow, just anything I can do to help, again, I'm going to pass out letters to all the downtown areas, would ask everybody if you get a chance to come. We just want to make a difference, you know what I'm saying, and get to know everybody. That's the big key, is just knowing people, and it just makes us a lot closer. Not for me, I just appreciate it.
So, Mr. Teeters, I can only talk to, like, about facts during public comments, but as a fact, that was probably the best cheeseburger I've had in a long time the other day.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that. I'd throw in the public appearance, we'll receive comments from Mr. Glenn Colby regarding blasting effects from the local quarry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for hearing me speak on this issue. Just in case I get a little faint and pass out, I've got members of Lake Wood Ranch HOA Board of Directors over there. They'll come on over and pick me up off the floor and revive me.
Mr. Colby, would you mind stating your name and address for the record?
My name's Glenn Colby. Address here is 535 Lake Wood Ranch, where I'm Managing Agent of Lake Wood Ranch HOA. I'm also the Managing Agent for Village of Sage Meadows Homeowners Association, Sage Meadows Homeowners Association, and Carriage House Village Homeowners Association, all around the quarry. There have been several attempts in recent years by other parties to start new mining operations to the northwest, and all have been rejected by the city as being incompatible with Temple's vision and future. Yet, the Miller Springs Quarry is allowed to have a rotating cast of operators come in and use the quarry that is on land owned by the Miller family. I wish to present to you some facts and figures that will shine new light on the impact of allowing the quarry to continue operating. When the current operator moves on or seeks a new permit, the city should stop issuing new permits to the operator or new operators. As the city grows, it relies on tax revenue based on property values. The quarry operation wants to have its cake and eat yours too. The market value of the land the quarry is on is worth close to $700,000, but the owners claim an ag exemption, which limits their appraised value to $367,000. This translates to a tax burden of only $8,900 instead of the almost $30,000 which would be paid without the exemption. That tax savings is the quarry's cake, and now let's look at yours. The market value of all the properties within only 1,300 feet of the quarry's property line is $110 million. The tax revenue from that land is over $3 million. Over the past 15 years, property values around the quarry have risen at about 2.4% per year. As more people move in next to the quarry, the more people talk about it, the more word gets around about the continual blasting and the plumes of dust which cover the neighborhoods of the groves at Lake Wood Ranch and windmill farms to the north, thanks to generally prevailing winds from the south. The more people talk, the more the quarry's operation will become a negative selling point for these people. When property values start lagging the normal rate of increase by only one-half of 1% per year, it means a drop in tax revenue for the city since property values do not rise as quickly. For that $110 million worth of existing property, over 15 years, a one-half percent lag in growth takes $500,000 or one-half a million dollars in revenue off of the books for the city over the same period of time, 15 years. That, Mr. Mayor, is the city's cake that the quarry will be eating. The residential and commercial interests that surround the quarry represent the city's future in terms of revenue and voting citizens. They beg you to have the leadership and the vision to see the quarry for what it is. A giant hole in the ground that will never be refilled is damaging the quality of life for your taxpayers and taking larger and larger bites out of your taxable revenue. The sooner the quarry is closed, the sooner the damage to the entire city will stop. Please start taking steps to cease all blasting and mining operations anywhere within the city limits and ETJ of Temple, Texas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colby. Counsel, are there any comments or questions? Thank you all for being here. Now, on item 4A, under Special Recognizations, we have recognition of the award-winning teams from the City of Temple Employee Chili Cook-Off benefiting the United Way of Central Texas. Ms. Myers and Ms. Bates?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three winning teams. I think you were going to help us recognize tonight.
Absolutely.
So, we recently, the city employees recently got together and held a chili cook-off to benefit the United Way. It was our first ever event. We had 11 teams, I believe, in there. We had Employee Choice Award, a Judges' Choice Award, and Hottest Chili Award, and Most Spirit. So, we would be pleased if, Mayor, if you'd help us recognize those teams tonight.
Absolutely. Let me start off with the Most Spirited. We had the Grand Iron Chili from the Parks and Rec Department, and we have representatives from the Parks Department here. Would y'all go up and step to the podium?
Congratulations.
And this is such, this is really a surprise, and I mean, I don't want anybody to think that this was planned, but Most Heat was the Fire Engine Red Chili from the Fire Department. That's great. You want to get over there, too? Because you know how they sell that stuff. The Mayor Pro Tim and I have actually discussed the amount of Pepto Bismol we had consumed after the chili. It was actually, it wasn't Dalmatian, was it? Sorry, Walter, bad joke. People's Choice and Judges' Choice, it was the Flash Bean Chili from the Police Department. So. And they, you know, it was a great one for us folks that, like, went through all the lights and sirens, and it was a very nice thing. And just because, I'm aware I'm going to do this, but, and Bean's really upset me now because I told him I was not going to do this, but my favorite chili was Beaufort Craig's in the back that I went back like 20 times. I don't actually, I can, I have a little record, but that's actually one that I have for you, so.
That's all I need.
Okay, thanks. It's from my heart, Bean. Thanks for the two people that got that out there. And we have James Thurston from the United Way. Here's old James, and so we have a broad-based non-cashable check that we'd like to present with you tonight.
Mayor, we raised over $1,000. We raised $1,066.50 for the United Way with our.
It was a great one, and a lot of people had fun doing it. Thanks, James. And item B, we have recognition of the City of Temple Employee of the Quarter and Employee of the Quarter Finalist for the fourth quarter of 2015.
Well, I'd like to start us off, but I have more comment about that last item, the People's Choice Award. There was some question about whether there was any tampering with the jury, both for the Mayor's Award and the People's Award, but for those other departments, I want to reassure them, we had the Police Department at Bunnell Fair investigation of the winners of that, and they assured us that everything was a book, so. Well, I'd like to start this out, but Bean's going to take us through the presentation of this award, but this is the second time I've recognized an Employee of the Quarter, and I want to just begin by just saying, I think we all talk about the fact that we really have a great workforce and that it's our most valuable asset, and I think this program is really our recognition of that, and we really do have over 800 employees that are very dedicated to both the city as employer and to the community and the services they provide. And so, this is part of our engagement program where we really want to make sure that our employees are committed to their jobs, they understand our mission, and do everything we can to really further those goals, so. Thanks. And so, we start on this program. This is our second time we've done it. I think, as we talked to you last time, the way it happens is we receive nominations from, they can be supervisors, they can be just other employees, they don't have to be in the same department, and I think one of the beautiful things that we've seen so far is a lot of the nominations are coming in from other departments who receive exceptional service from other departments and employees, and we know, you know, who provides exceptional service. So, we're looking for people that are really doing great work, who go above and beyond their regular assignments, and demonstrate a positive attitude about the community and their jobs. And all of the nominees, and we had very many nominees, fill those requirements very well. So, we thought I'd want to turn it over to Bean.
Thank you, sir. This quarter, we had a total of 35 employees nominated for the award, and as Mr. Graham said, they came from divisions across our organization. Our employee committee had an incredibly tough job to do to narrow down those fabulous employees to select our Employee of the Quarter and our finalist, but tonight, we are pleased to recognize three finalists for this quarter's award as well as our Employee of the Quarter. I'd ask if Mr. Graham and Mayor Dunn, if you could join us and help us recognize our winners. Our first finalist is Lynn Melendez. Juan is a maintenance worker in the Solid Waste Department, and he was nominated by his coworker, Dawn Orange. Mr. Melendez and Ms. Orange, would you join us at the dais, please? Juan was recently headed to an event to set out trash bins. On his way across the 57th Street Bridge, he noticed a man standing on the bridge looking over the rail at the ground below. Coming back, he noticed the man was still standing there. Juan stopped his truck and spent several minutes talking to the man. The man told Juan that out of all the cars that had passed, he was the only one that had stopped. Upon parting ways, Juan flagged down a Temple Police Officer and mentioned his concern. In her nomination, Dawn writes, "Juan's caring nature, I believe, helped save that gentleman's life on the bridge. Please join me in congratulating Juan on being named an Employee of the Quarter Finalist and thanking him for his dedicated service to our community." In addition to being an Employee of the Quarter Finalist, we also would like to present Mr. Melendez with the Life Saving Award from our Fire Department.
So, this, so that all the kids at home can hear this, but we have Temple Fire and Rescue Fire Chief's Certificate of Commendation awarded to Juan Johnny Melendez in recognition of his caring, compassion, courage, and bravery above and beyond the call of duty on July 31, 2015, which exemplifies the true spirit of a firefighter. And Chief, would you like to present that, too?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Actually, I want to, do you mind standing up, standing up here as a finalist?
Our next finalist is Brian Winkler. Brian is a captain with the Temple Fire Department. Captain Winkler was nominated by his Deputy Chief, Scott Holsher. Captain Winkler and DC, Holsher, would you please join us? According to DC Holsher, Captain Winkler is an excellent leader on the fire ground and a great manager of city resources. He has managed the Fire Department's air pack program for over 20 years. In his nomination, DC Holsher writes, "I cannot emphasize enough the importance of this program to the Fire Department. Firefighters must have an absolute trust in the reliability and dependability of their air packs. Every breath they take from that air pack strapped to their back can be the difference between life and death in a hazardous environment." Brian recently oversaw and managed the implementation of the department's latest upgrade to a fleet of new air packs. This upgrade was a massive undertaking that has taken two years to complete, with Captain Winkler managing every step of the way. Please join me in congratulating Captain Winkler on being named an Employee of the Quarter Finalist and thanking him for his dedicated service.
So, we were at HUB the other day, I mean, not together, we just ran into each other. But I, you would have been so mad at me, but I nearly, I was within, like, five seconds of saying, hey, congratulations, and I remembered that, like, at the last second that I could not say that. So, if I chatted about, you know, Nilla wafers or something, you'd know why. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can't leave.
Yeah, can't leave. Got to stay.
Our last finalist is Wayne Maddox. Wayne is a Systems Analyst in our Information Technology Department. Wayne was nominated by his coworkers Leslie Evans, Deb Swift Alejandro, and Kathy Gober and Sonya Alexander. Would you all please join us? I think there's a few nominators here. According to Sonya, Wayne is encouraging and always has a positive attitude. In her nomination form, Kathy says, "Wayne responds quickly to our IT needs, and his friendly and professional manner is a pleasure." Deb writes, "Wayne always goes above and beyond in everything he fixes and helps us no matter what." Leslie says, "Wayne is great to talk with, knowledgeable in his field, and is always happy and friendly. He is an absolute joy to work with." Please join me in congratulating Wayne on being named an Employee of the Quarter.
I'm just up here for color commentary, but, you know, that's a really tough group to have them say something nice about you, because I've known most of those people for years, and I don't think that it's anything nice about me, so congratulations.
And he has to work for Alan.
Well, I think we need to give him this. Sorry, Alan, shut off her system.
And finally, our Employee of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of 2015 is Heather Wilson Ellis. Heather is the Administrative Assistant for the Public Works Department. Heather was nominated by her supervisor, Nicole Teralva, and also her coworkers, Dawn Bond, Damon Boniface, and Kenny Henderson. Would you all please join us? According to Damon, Heather's position as Administrative Assistant for the Public Works Director is very unique in a sense she is able to be involved with each division that serves the citizens and visitors of Temple. Heather has always welcomed the opportunity to take on new tasks and responsibilities. She goes above and beyond nearly every day. She fosters a very positive attitude that makes all of us want to raise our work standards to do the best we can each and every day. Kenny writes, "Heather is the hub in the PW Will." And Dawn, in his nomination, wrote, "Every place has a desk or two that people find a reason to visit when they are in the building. H. We," as she is excellently known, "H. We's desk is where people stop by to get immediate, excellent, and well-informed help. It is where they come to soak up positive attitude, generosity, and sincere cheerfulness." And according to Nicole, Heather has gone out of her way to provide superior customer service in many areas. She is the glue that keeps us all moving together as a team. Please join me in congratulating Heather on being named Employee of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of 2015.
I'd like to thank Bren Myers and Heather Bates for continuing with our positive employee
And I would like to tell everyone that I've just made Tim Davis Councilmember of the Quarter, so. Thanks, it's a big deal, so. Next item is item 5, the Consent Agenda. All items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. Counsel, this is item 5A through 5T. Is there anything that you would wish to remove for separate consideration?
No, I know one of the items on there is a valid point one for camera, and I wonder if she might like to introduce somebody.
Yes, thank you, Jonathan. There's an item on the agenda approving an appointment of another deputy city attorney, which Jonathan will tell you that it's the 20th attorney that I've hired, but it's really not. But Jim Cocklemyer is here. Jim just found out a couple weeks ago that he passed his bar exam, which is very exciting, but he will be starting, hopefully, assuming that you all approve, starting on Monday, and he's going to be heading up our Right-of-Way acquisition, and we are extremely excited to have him on board, and so he's here tonight with his wife and his young daughter as well.
Well, I hope it goes through now that you brought your family. Counsel, I will entertain a motion through items 5A through 5T.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
A motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Councilmember Morales.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. And Jim, congratulations. Thanks for letting me almost make your daughter Rose cry, and I'm sorry about that. I'll keep a safe distance from now on. Item 6, items A and B. A, consider adopting a resolution relating distance requirements identified in Section 5.3.15 of the Unified Development Code and Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordnances between establishments with alcoholic beverage sales for on-premise consumption and places of worship for property located at the Gateway Center, 4501 South General Bruce Drive, Suite 70, and 6B, a second reading, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit allowing the sale of less than 50% of the total gross of revenue being from the sale of all alcoholic beverages with onsite consumption in Suite 70 of the Gateway Center located at 4501 South General Bruce Drive. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just a brief update, as you remember from the November 5th meeting, that the variance was tabled. This was to allow time to confirm relocation of the Harvest Church from the restaurant, and to date, the church has not relocated, so the variance is still needed. Staff is recommending approval as presented on the November 5th meeting, and that concludes my update.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Remember, this is a, this is a second reading, and I'll need to take each item separately. I'll entertain a motion on item 6A.
Motion for approval, item 6A. Second.
A motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. And I will entertain a motion on item 6B.
Motion to approve, item 6B.
Second.
A motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
And item 7, first reading in public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance, 7A, creating Chapter 40 nuisances of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Temple, Texas; B, amending Chapter 16, health and sanitation of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Temple, Texas, to delete Article 4, neighborhood nuisances; and C, amending Chapter 37, traffic of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Temple, Texas, to delete Section 37-108 and Article 5, junk motor vehicles. Ms. Flanders.
Sorry about that long description that you had to read.
You are an attorney, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually went over this in a workshop a couple meetings ago, some proposed changes on our nuisance ordinance. Currently, nuisance, most of our nuisance sections are in Chapter 16, Article 4. The proposal is to actually take those out of Chapter 16, take out a couple of sections in Chapter 37, and create an entirely new chapter, which will be Chapter 40, titled nuisances. And we hope that that will make it easier on code enforcement. On the one hand, they'll have all of their nuisance sections in one place, and hopefully easier for the public as well if they're looking for those sections. Some of the amendments, it's a general cleanup of the language. We're omitting some outdated language and some unused provisions. Code enforcement asked for a change to the mailing requirement. Currently, they have to send notices, certified mail, which is not actually required by state law, and so we're changing that to a requirement to send first-class mail with a certificate of mailing. We added a section about prohibiting overgrown and uncultivated bamboo. We actually added a wildflower exception that I'll talk about here in a couple slides. We actually added a wildflower exception that I'll talk about here in a couple slides, and a prohibition against the accumulation of appliances and indoor furniture in a way that can be seen by adjoining property owners. So, again, we hope that the proposed amendments will provide some help in code enforcement so we have one chapter to rely on for nuisances. Hopefully, it'll be easier to find and understand for the general public in using more user-friendly language. It will also result in a pretty significant cost savings for code enforcement in changing the mailing requirement. So, I wanted to just point out some of the more substantive changes. High grass and weeds, the way that the proposed amendments are written is that on lots less than two acres or lots that contain a structure, weeds and grass cannot exceed nine inches. On lots that are larger than two acres or that are zoned ag or have an agricultural exemption, within the 50 feet of a property line or a structure, grass and weeds cannot exceed nine inches. On the remainder of the property, grass and weeds cannot exceed 48 inches. Quickly, we did add the prohibition on bamboo, so there's a prohibition, or it's unlawful to allow bamboo to be planted or maintained in a manner that encroaches on an adjoining property, and that the owners, occupants, or tenants have to take measures necessary to prevent that from happening. The wildflower exception is, would apply during a certain period of the year, March 1st through May 31st. If you have a concentrated area of wildflowers on the property, then grasses and weeds in that area can grow up to 18 inches before being in violation of the ordinance. Parking, parking is currently covered in Section 37.108, and it's pretty complicated. Bren and Jonathan gave me some history on the section, which I think was implemented back in 2010. What we're proposing is to delete that section out of Chapter 37, simplify it significantly, and put it in the new chapter, and basically prohibiting parking in the grass or yard or any other unimproved surface. Adding the prohibition against having appliances, building materials, equipment, or indoor furniture outside of an enclosed structure and that can be seen from an adjoining property. A couple of exceptions would be firewood that's stacked at least 12 inches off the ground, or building materials that are being kept on the property in connection with an active building permit. Quickly, some of the other listed nuisances, which really isn't a change from our current ordinance, prohibiting the accumulation of filth, rubbish, trash, any conditions that would harbor rats, mice, or snakes, or be a breeding ground for mosquitoes, or permitting the accumulation of animal waste. Enforcement, failure to abate a nuisance after notice would constitute an offense, which is a Class C misdemeanor, with a fine of up to $2,000, except for a couple of other circumstances. Junk vehicles is actually less than that. Each day that a violation remains is a separate offense, and the city does have the ability, after notice, a notice period, to abate and bill for the work or assess a lien on the property. If notice is given for a violation and the violation happens again within one year of that initial notice, the city can, without further notice, remedy the situation at the owner's expense and assess a lien. And that's it. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Comments? All right. If not, I will, go ahead. I can see some citizens would look at that $2,000 fine. Of course, I know it's a separate offense, so that could accumulate, but in a lot of instances, the cleanup by the city of being billed for those charges, you know, for the cost of that work would be less than $2,000.
It could be. Well, I mean, it does depend. I think when we mow, when we have high grass and weeds, the charge for that is $200, I believe. So, that is true. And the 2,000 is allowed by state law. It's only for offenses that deal with health and safety issues. And so, and if you are cited for the offense and you are, have to go to municipal court for it, obviously, there's some wiggle room for the prosecutor to suggest a fine less than $2,000 as well.
You could, you could get both.
But you could fine and bill?
That's true. Yeah.
Well, and, you know, from our own experience, the, the, these aren't the folks that would just go out and levy a $2,000 fine.
Yes, they've been approached a number of times before. Fine is levy.
Any more questions or comments? I will entertain a motion on item 7. Oh, and forgive me. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure on the first reading of item 7. Motion to approve, item 7. Second. Motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Item 8, a resolution, consider adopting a resolution appointing two members to the Library Board to fill expired terms through September 1st, 2018, and in our workshop, we actually decided that, or we suggested that we table this, and I would entertain a motion to table item 8.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. And on behalf of the entire City Council and everybody with the City of Temple, we'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and this meeting is adjourned.